Welcome to this, the November tenth meeting of the Livermore City Council. I call the meeting to order. Uh, roll call, please.
Councilmember Baryantos is absent, excused. Councilmember Dunbar?
Here.
Councilmember Wong?
Here.
Vice Mayor Browning?
Here.
Mayor Marshawn?
Here. If you'll please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and
Thank you. Um, let's see, uh, so the attorney, was there any action taken in the closed session that needs to be reported?
No reportable action.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Uh, moving on to, uh, uh, three point one proclamations and presentations. We have a presentation from the Human Services Commission, uh, that's the annual update from Chair Elizabeth McWhorter.
Is it working fine?
There we go.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for having me tonight. Um, it's so great to see everyone, especially, uh, my human, my Livermore Key to the City, uh, fellow alum, now Vice Chair Evan Browning. So excited to see folks in different city roles, right? Um, so yes, I'm pleased to deliver this Human Services Commission annual update tonight as Chair. So you may be wondering, some folks in the audience, some viewers, what our commission does. So here are our duties and responsibilities. Primarily, we serve as a primary advisory body to city council on social conditions in the Livermore community, especially for those residents who are low or moderate income. We advise the city council on social needs within the Livermore community that will affect the delivery of human services and unaddressed needs. And we advise the city council regarding expenditure of funding from HUD, including but not limited to CDBG and home program funds. So what are some challenges and opportunities we faced over the past year? Our primary challenge is dealt with the CDBG and home funding. This is primarily in the unpredictability of these funds to local government. There's been no indication of future HUD allocation formula reduction, and only fifteen percent of the annual allocation can be used for public services. On the other side of the coin, our opportunities have dealt with funding and community engagement. So we've been striving to better engage our federal, state, and county partners to advocate for additional resources in the human services realm. And we're also continuing public outreach to determine human services priorities and goals. And, uh, some examples of this last bullet point, whoops, um, are, uh, going out to farmers markets and tabling there, engaging with the community, and inviting the public, as always, to join us for our monthly meetings and participate in public comment. And finally, uh, we do an annual PIN count, also known as point in time count, to gauge the number of unhoused residents here in Livermore. All right. So here are the highlights over the past year for our commission. We're really excited about these first two. Uh, we just implemented a two-year grant process for FY twenty-five to twenty-seven. And with this, we released a new joint Tri-Valley grant application as well. Uh, we noticed over the years, a number of our applicants or, uh, human services, uh, service providers, uh, were having to complete three separate grant applications, and it became cumbersome for a lot of small nonprofits to be able to do that. So we wanted to help streamline this process. So we partnered with our counterparts in Dublin and Pleasanton to be able to have this joint application. And we've received a lot of positive feedback from the service providers as a result. Uh, so with this, we had a special meeting in February twenty-twenty-five wherein twenty-nine organizations joined us, where our meeting was hosted in Dublin, and they presented forty grant applications for our consideration, and told us more about their organization, their needs, and their funding goals. So it was great to hear from some, uh, new-to-us organizations and to see some familiar faces as well. In all, we reviewed and scored thirty-one grant applications from twenty-four organizations. And finally, we recommended funding for fourteen applications from nine organizations. Uh, we approved the HUD mandated, uh, consolidated plan for FY twenty-twenty-five to twenty-nine as well. So I invite any questions or comments anyone might have.
Questions, comments? Vice Mayor?
Yeah, uh, this is a comment, uh, for both you and staff, actually. So I'm really excited about the two-year grant process. That's something we've discussed since, uh, I think before I've been, I was a commissioner. It's been a long time coming. Uh, and so I won't put you on the spot to answer this question right now, but next year, I really am curious to hear, you know, what do we do with the extra time that, between the two cycles to really make sure we can meet our goals? And for staff, uh, just a reminder that part of this wasn't, the goal wasn't to meet for a year and then occasionally meet as a human services commission on the off-year, is really to make sure that there's meaningful work for them to do as well. Um, you know, really looking at how can we have the commission help to promote and support our nonprofit, uh, community? So I'm hoping, you know, in the, in this transition year where we're really looking at that, we do have some good ideas. We go to the commissioners for their ideas, and we really work hard to make sure we're supporting, uh, the entirety of our nonprofit community.
Mayor Marshawn, members of the city council, if I may, this is your city manager, Mariana Virch, uh, Vice Mayor. I just wanted to, uh, remind the city council that each commission, uh, has to develop a work plan for the upcoming year, and it happens around this time of the year where they start developing their work plan for, uh, twenty-twenty-six. So we'll, we'll make sure as staff is to provide copies of those work plans to the city council in our weekly updates.
So, thank you. Yeah, I'm very excited to see what's happening for this. This is a big change.
Well, you do a tremendous amount of work on that commission, so sincerely appreciate the work that you do for our community. And it's, uh, you're a very hardworking committee or commission, so sincerely appreciate that.
So, of course, and thank you for your time tonight. If there are no other questions or comments?
Yes.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Chair. Okay, with that, we've got the, uh, Livermore Downtown Annual Update. Kara Klatchman is going to be presenting that. She's the Executive Director for Livermore Downtown, Inc. And Barb Binotto is here as well.
Good evening, Mayor Marshawn, city council members and city staff. Um, my name is Barbara Binotto. I am the twenty-twenty-five president of LDI's board. Um, I'm here with Kara, who are brand-new, um, executive director. And we're here tonight just to give a brief overview of our annual report. Uh, but first, we'd really like to thank the city for your continued support of LDI. In fact, I just learned that next year will be our fortieth year that, uh, we have partnered with the city, and we're so appreciative. Could you get the next slide, please, Teresa?
Thank you. As you know, our nonprofit is dedicated to the economic health and growth of our downtown. Here are a list of the projects, the, um, committees and services that we provide. Next slide, please. Uh, this past year, we've conducted eleven events, five of which were community give-back events. Those were, um, Family Night at the Thursday Farmers Market, Kidstown Halloween Hayday, Earlier Than the Bird, Holiday Village at Carnegie Park, and Holiday Sites and Sounds Parade. These events brought an additional three hundred thousand people to our downtown. And we couldn't have had these successful events without the help of our dedicated volunteers. And they logged over fifteen hundred hours to help us. We have a big online presence. We use it to promote downtown. And it's also a vehicle to promote our partners' businesses and their special events. And on the next slide, I'll hand it over to Kara.
Twenty-twenty-five has truly been a year of transition and growth for LDI. I stepped into the role as Executive Director in March, during a time where we were also without our part-time office assistants. Over the past eight months, I have focused on learning the programs, understanding their needs, and streamlining oper- operations. We just rehired for that position this month, which will help us move forward with more capacity in the future. This year, LDI has also been focused on program restructuring, improving efficiency, and aligning our work with strategic goals. Looking ahead, we will continue our strong lineup of events and services, and in twenty-twenty-six, we'll also be focusing on launching new events that drive business, foot traffic, and tourism, creating collaborative marketing opportunities with local organizations, rolling out new downtown partner program with, uh, aiming for growth in the partnership by ten percent, hosting quarterly business meetings to stay connected and gather feedback from our business community, and expanding our Board of Directors by three new additional members in twenty-twenty-six. We're excited for what's ahead and our continued growth with our downtown community. Once again, we would like to thank Mayor, City Council, and city staff for your continued partnership, along with our annual sponsors that share our same passion for the vibrant Livermore downtown. And I invite any questions or comments.
So you've got a couple of big events coming up. Uh, December fifth, I believe, is the Holiday Village at Carnegie Park?
Yes.
Uh, and then, of course, December sixth is the Sites and Sounds Parade.
Yes.
Great. Looking forward to, to both of those, and as does the entire community.
Yes, absolutely.
Questions or comments? Vice Mayor?
Uh, so first of all, thank you. Um, and second, uh, given that it was such a big focus, uh, in your early work, I was hoping you could talk to us a little bit more about the partners' programs so that the audience at home and the council members who aren't at all your board meetings might understand a little more what's happening, the benefits of becoming a partner, and kind of the revamp you're going through right now.
Yeah, so we put a lot of focus on this revamp. Um, it's first important to note that LDI serves the whole downtown business core community, not just our partners. The partners get perks. So these perks are divided into three different categories. We have a perk for the downtown businesses. We have a category for the destination partners. And we have a category for nonprofits. With this new revamp, we're also adding a new category that is for Livermore-made makers so that we can include them and kind of use an incubative role to try and encourage them to potentially either partner and collaborate with a business that already exists to have a storefront or to get their own storefront. Um, we'll also be adding some additional perks, um, including, what else are we adding? Um, waived fees. So traditionally, what it offers is the capability to share and promote, as Barbara mentioned on our social media, to thousands of followers, anything that they have going on. Um, they get waived fees for booth fees, um, events, uh, participation fees. Uh, they get, uh, opportunity to promote their activities in our newsletter that goes out weekly. They get an opportunity to, um, be a voting member in our board election. Um, I think that's, oh, yes, the business mixers that we're talking about. Um, so we're talking about, um, also adding block captains. So we have board and our business representation touching every area and every business to check in and have somebody that they feel comfortable with coming to for any questions or concerns that they might have outside of just always coming to LDI staff, um, that might not be available at that specific time. So we're really trying to regrow and revamp this program into something really exciting, um, to offer to the businesses.
Thank you. Uh, I noticed one of your, uh, things on the slides was board growth. Can you speak a little to, uh, what you're looking for there?
Yeah, did you want to talk about that? Sure. I can't.
Certainly. Uh, for twenty-twenty-six, we will be expanding the board to three additional people, so we're very excited. We're very excited about that. Um, and we really want our board members to be involved in, not only in our events, in, involved in our services to help our partners and the members, um, of the, of the entire district. To be a board member, um, you have to be a downtown business. And, um, you have to be a partner of, of LDI, as well as to be supportive of downtown and, um, being part of, of our growth and our strategic planning. We do have, um, two members-at-large, um, for next year. Those are business people that, uh, that love the downtown area. Um, and it's, we encourage, um, uh, members-at-large because they sort of, they give us a different perspective rather than just being in, uh, in the downtown district. Um, so we're really excited about adding two more b- members-at-large.
Yeah. Just remember Wong.
I want to congratulate you for just the vibrancy of downtown and the growth over the last few years. Um, we're really on the map. I feel like people around in, in the region were becoming known for our downtown. People from nearby cities are coming to dine and shop here, and it's, it's really, uh, brought a lot of, uh, great positivity to our city. And I imagine you're having to adjust to all the growth and all the construction, and everything's really changing and growing downtown. And, you know, I, I think you've addressed some of that, some of the changes that you're making and expanding the board and things like that. Is there anything else that you're doing to accommodate kind of the rapid changes that are happening?
Can you talk about construction meetings?
Yeah, so we also have to give a lot of credit to the city staff of, um, they've been wonderful and helpful in, um, collaborating with us to, um, host monthly meetings with our businesses that are virtual, um, with city staff representatives, our, um, construction partners and LDI, giving, um, those monthly updates on the several projects that are going down and addressing questions and concerns, as well as, um, the city provides us with a month or a weekly update, um, that we send out then and forward to our business, um, owners. And, um, I think that that's just been terrific and fantastic, so much so that the businesses have requested at the last meeting that they don't want these meetings to end. They, they love the, the communication and collaboration between all of the different entities and find them useful. So, um, we have discussed, um, what that might look like moving forward. Um, I know that we're going to continue to have the construction and projects, so they're not going to end soon, but there is definitely that opportunity to collaborate and continue having some form of this in the future, too.
And I appreciate the patience of all the businesses downtown and with, you know, the construction never goes as straightforward as you think it's going to be. But, um, i- initially, I was concerned about so much construction happening at the same time, but doesn't seem to have slowed people down from coming to downtown. Anytime of the day or night I go there, it seems to be packed full of people. And when I bring friends from out of town, they, they are so impressed by our downtown. People will walk through anything to get to where they want to go. So the, the, I, I've just been really impressed with how things have continued on through all the projects, and I can only imagine what's going to happen when it's all done. It's going to be great.
Well, readers of the East Bay Times voted Livermore as the number-one downtown in the entire East Bay. Absolutely, and, uh, a- as do I, agree with all of them. Uh, and recognizing that, uh, we will soon have an additional four hundred fifty parking spaces of opening up to allow even more people to come in and enjoy our downtown. So thank you for your, uh, work collaborating with the city and making our downtown the remarkable place that it is.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, uh, we don't have any advisory body appointments. Uh, the open forum, uh, the city clerk can explain how people can participate in the open forum.
Thank you, Mayor. The city council's agenda provides opportunities for the public to participate in the meeting by addressing the city council in the following ways. For non-agendized items, the public has the opportunity during open forum to address the city council on any item of interest that's within the city council's subject matter jurisdiction. For agendized items, the public can address the city council on each item of business it considers when the mayor opens public comment and should be focused on that particular item. Please note, a speaker is not required to answer any questions from the city council, and the city council is not required to answer questions from the public. However, the mayor has the discretion to ask staff to address the speaker's comments when a council member believes it's relevant to a particular business item. When participating in tonight's meeting, one comment may be given per person, per item. For consent calendar items, one comment may be given for all items on the consent calendar. If consent calendar items are pulled for discussion by the city council, a speaker will be allowed one comment for each item pulled for discussion and a separate comment for the remaining consent calendar. To provide comment, please fill out and turn in a speaker card found at the entrance of the council chamber. Speakers will be announced in the order received. Once public comment opens, each participant's name will be announced, and their three minutes will begin once at the lectern. The mayor will announce the conclusion of the public comment period after comments have been voiced into the record. And there are currently three speakers for open forum. And the first speaker is Donna Kabane, followed by Shirley Lewandowski, followed by Maya Lang.
Good evening. The city's consultant, Geocentech, conducted testing at the airport for PFAS contamination. Their report to the water board confirms elevated PFAS levels exist at LVK in the soil and shallow groundwater. Geocentech made several recommendations. In response, the water board states they do not agree with Geocentech's interpretations and recommendations. In fact, the water board requires several mistakes be corrected and ordered further PFAS investigations at LVK. Supplemental testing must be detailed in a work plan due to the water board, February second. The water board also states in their response that the city, as the current owner of LVK, will be responsible for all testing and cleanup costs. Because Livermore taxpayers will ultimately pay for the testing and all the cleanup costs, the taxpayers have a right to know more about this issue. Please address the following questions tonight. One, how well elevated PFAS findings affect hangar development plans in the South Hangar area, especially South Hangar S dash one? Two, because the city is the only financially liable entity, will airport development be postponed until the required water board investigations are finalized? Three, under matters initiated by council members, will you agendize the Geocentech report and subsequent water board correspondence for a council meeting in December? Four, we learned LVK is not selling Swift one hundred UL for piston-engine aircraft as stated at the last city council meeting. In fact, Swift one hundred UL has not received FAA approval. Swift one hundred UL is only being sold at five flight schools on a trial basis. On the other hand, GAMMY one hundred UL is approved and certified by the FAA for piston-engine aircraft. Will you direct the fixed-space operator to start selling GAMMY one hundred UL for piston-engine aircraft at LVK as soon as possible? Five, noise from jet aircraft continues to be a major concern. The hyperlink for the public to access and track noise complaints was not working as of November third. Has the hyperlink been fixed? Increasing transparency with transpa- with taxpayers, excuse me, about levels of PFAS contamination at LVK and discussing ongoing water board investigations at LVK at council, at council meetings will make a safer airport for all Tri-Valley residents. Thank you for your consideration.
The next speaker is Shirley Lewandowski, followed by Maya Lang.
Hope you guys can see me. I'm kind of short. Good evening, Mayor, council members and staff. I'm Shirley Lewandowski, and I'm a Dublin resident. You know, at the last council meeting, the Airport Commission Chair mentioned intending to be the first airport to purchase Swift's new unleaded gas, avgas, UL one hundred R. I asked the council to be cautious before allowing the Swift avgas to be purchased until you understand what you're buying. Do you know what's in it? It has a component called ETBE, which stands for ethylbutyl ether. Its chemical formula is C six H fourteen O. There is twenty-five percent of ETBE in the Swift tool. In April of this year, the International Agency of, for Research on Cancer for the World Health Organization stated that ETBE was classified as a potential carcinogen to humans on the basis of sufficient evidence for cancer in experimental animals. The mechanistic evidence in experimental systems was strong for ETBE. It showed consistent and coherent evidence that ETBE alters cell proliferation, cell death, and nutrient supply in lab rats. Rats exposed to lifelong inhalation of EBT has produced increased incidence of liver tumors in male rats. Inhalation of ETBE fumes should be controlled as the main concerns with this gas are acute and chronic toxicities, such as irritation and potential effects on liver and kidneys. Occupational exposure should be minimized as ETBE is a volatile organic compound and can cause headaches, dizziness, or respiratory irritation. So airport employees involved in refueling fifteen or twenty airplanes each day will have a very large exposure to the fumes from this avgas. Periodic nausea and dizziness in the cockpit from fuel leakage at O-rings in fuel selector valves or electric boost pumps is absolutely ined- inevitable. The aging while in a fuel storage will cause peroxide formation and will likely result in substantial degradation of the octane rating for ETBE-based fuels in storage tanks. This creates a significant risk of engine failure due to detonation of the degraded ETBE. Avgass can sometimes sit in the storage tanks of airports for six months to a year or more, especially in remote areas. This creates a real hazard for degradation of the octane and resulting risk for the detonation of aircraft engines. So please, consider whether Swift's ULR should be purchased, given these potential hazards to the health and safety of the airport employees and the potential of being a carcinogen to humans. Thank you.
The next speaker is Maya Lang.
Good day, city council. I'm Maya. I'm a local student, local scout, and future musician. Today, I wanted to talk about some issues happening in Livermore. So in North Livermore, there is a shopping center called Basco Plaza, and it's kind of abandoned. It looks really dull, and to be honest, it doesn't really feel like Livermore. I know after school, students walk to it and go, like, hi- hang out there. They go to Starbucks there and the Seven-Eleven there, and they kind of litter and, like, cause chaos. I feel like there should be more businesses and stores in there so they can, like, have other things to do instead of restaurants, you know? And also, in Basco Road, there's like, on the way to Brentwood, there's like a lot, there's a lot of traffic from citizens going to Brentwood. I saw that one lane is like completely packed with cars, and it's like non-stop traffic, while the other lane is completely free. Like, you can walk in that lane if you could. And that's a really big problem because traffic is not good. We should open up more lanes on the way to Brentwood, so it's more convenient for the traffic, you know? And I remember a few years ago, I saw an article in a newspaper, and it talked about they were going to open up lanes, new lanes, by Dalton Road and Basco Road. But it's a few years now, and nothing happened. So there should be something to do about that, you know? And also, in, and there, there could be, like, in Basco, in the Basco Plaza, there should be, like, new stores to open up for, for businesses, for students, you know? And also, it'll be pretty convenient because I'm a future musician if a school of rock opened in Livermore because it's really good for me and my future career, too. And also, wait, what, what was I going to talk about? I think that's pretty all I have to say today. And, and also, I'm Maya, local student, local scout, future musician. Thank you, guys. And also, I was in the Veterans Day Parade in Pleasanton. So I'm So I'm such a great scout. Thank you, guys. Have a great night.
That concludes open forum.
Great. Thank you. Just to address one of the the comments that the last speaker had. One of the issues in building lanes on Vasco Road is we could add more lanes in Livermore, in the city of Livermore, at a significant expense. But once we leave the the city limits of Livermore, we hit the county area. And then it would be incumbent upon the county to fund the additional lanes going onto Brentwood and the county has to be incentivized to do that. So there are a lot of different moving pieces here, but thank you for bringing the that up. And we're trying to bring in additional businesses, and that requires significant investment. The city doesn't build businesses. The marketplace does. So thank you for your comments. With that, we're going to move on to the consent calendar. Let's see, is there any other new speakers for consent?
No, sir, there's not.
Okay, I'm going to close any public comment period on that. Is there anybody that would like to pull an item for discussion? Because of the amount of time that's been spent with the the project and people have been anticipating this, I'd like to pull six point two for a brief brief presentation, and that's the SBC building.
Honorable Mayor Marshawn, members of the city council, this is once again your city manager, Mariana Birch. And item six point two, we do have a presentation, sir, and it will be presented by Jennifer Ackerman, associate plan. Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Mayor and members of the city council. The item before you is a second amendment to the purchase and sale agreement with Michael Messenger. The property is located at the corner of South Livermore Avenue and Second Street, northwest of the post office in the downtown specific plan. The building is known as the former SBC building and was intended to be a restaurant after renovations to portions of the building to portions of the building were completed. Here is a rendering of the architecture that was approved by the planning commission in two thousand twenty-two. Although the use of the property is proposed to change from a restaurant with a bar to an event center, the exterior architecture will remain as shown, preserving the historical portion of the building and is currently under construction. The current language in the agreement states that the initial use, which is defined as twelve months, shall be as a restaurant. The proposed language will state that the initial use of the property shall be as a restaurant with bar or event center. The proposed name of the event center will be Blanco. This coming winter, the planning commission will consider the conditional use permit for the event center separately and subsequent to this amendment. Downtown Livermore is enjoying a large quantity of existing and proposed restaurants. The applicant expressed concern with filling a large two hundred and fifty seat restaurant on a nightly basis. The current absence of and demand for an upscale event center in the downtown inspired the change in use. Staff supports the amendment and recommends the city council adopt the resolution authorizing the city manager to sign the second amendment to the agreement to amend the initial use of the property from a restaurant with bar to a restaurant with bar or event center. Staff is available for questions. Thank you.
Any questions from the council? Just a quick question. A restaurant tends to have people coming out throughout the the portion of the the day. But an event center, everybody has to arrive like for the event. One of my concerns would be traffic circulation and and parking. Is that going to be vetted out during the the conditional use permit?
Yes, sir, it will be vetted out during the conditional use permit, and traffic engineering is looking at the the proposal. And those issues will be addressed. Furthermore, the the project will be conditioned to operate outside of peak hours to address those concerns.
Okay, I'm very excited to see this project coming back. It's been, you know, we we had IGATE there for a while and which we now Daybreak Labs, but it's been interesting to see how this project has evolved. So I'm looking forward to this. I think it'll be a good addition to the downtown. Councilmember Dunbar.
Hi, you answered some of my questions by email, and I just want to put them out into the world. So everyone's on the same page about what we're doing here. One was already addressed by the mayor. Another was, you know, related to the change in use. I think it's fair to say that when this was approved with Vice Mayor Branning and I on the planning mission back in two thousand twenty-two, the restaurant situation downtown was substantially different. We have a lot of new spaces that have come in or are in development right now that changed the economics perhaps and the number of spaces we have that are have been growing. Is that fair to say?
That is fair to say, yes.
And then my other question was, you know, what are the permitted uses for this building that are not CUP related perhaps? And why are those maybe not the best fit for this particular building?
Thank you. Other permitted uses include specialty retail, specialty food stores, things like that. They're all outlined in the downtown specific plan. This particular building is unique in that it's a tri-level building, if if you will. There is a basement and the the main floor is actually a few feet above ground level. And then the rooftop, of course, lends itself to event space, which will be really nice to to see the different levels of that building utilized at different times during an event.
And lastly, can, I know parking will be addressed in the CUP, as you mentioned, but can you speak to some of the things that might be available to us to make sure that parking and circulation is addressed?
Sure. There is currently the diagonals parking that's that's striped. And so traffic engineering is looking at the restriping, making sure that those those dimensions are compliant with the current codes and that ADA parking spaces are the, that the requirements are met. And we have, as the mayor pointed out earlier, we'll have the parking garage that will be completed shortly. The applicant has also expressed that they are going to have shuttle buses that will be able to move guests to and from the event center. They're also in negotiations with, for parking lease agreements with other property owners within one block of the event center.
Thank you. Those are all my questions. Hopefully that clarified for the public.
Okay, any other questions, comments? Okay, with that, this is the consent calendar. I'd be willing to entertain a motion.
I'm with approval of six one through six three.
I'll second.
Motion made by Councilmember Dunbar, seconded by Vice Mayor Branning. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? The pass unanimously? No public hearings, no matters for consideration. We move on to council reports and matters initiated. Councilmember Dunbar, lead us off, please.
Wow, firefighting was so much fun.
That's why you leave it to the firefighters, right?
No kidding. The Veterans Day Parade was great. Been a couple of good weeks in Livermore. Nothing much to report.
Councilmember Wong.
With our fire chief in the audience, I want to thank you for all the work it must have taken to host us for an entire day and put us through all those rigorous exercises. It really was a lot of fun and also very hard, and I'm still sore five days later, so, or four days. I really enjoyed and learned a lot. I, we were all together at a lot of events, so I just want to highlight a couple of things that I was the only, where I was the only person. One was the civic innovation workshop, which I got to attend in place of Mayor Marshawn, and it was right up my alley. Students teaching other students to do civic engagement. I loved it so much. It was so great, and I asked them to let me come back to every workshop they do. And the other thing is every, the first Wednesday of every month is the LGBTQ mixer downtown. It's called Tri-Valley Rainbow Night as Swirl. And it's so much fun, and I dropped in there because it was the night that we were all down there for Vice Mayor Dunbar's celebration of downtown. And so it was great. So anyone who is interested, first Wednesday of every night at Swirl.
All right. Vice Mayor Branning.
All right, thank you. Yeah, I am also still sore from Fire Off, but it was a great event, so thank you for that. The beard is starting to come in, so ten days in, it is very itchy, but if you would like to support Rooms for Hope, it's me and many others. You don't have to donate to my page, but there are multiple opportunities. So I would encourage people to support that cause. I'd also like to just highlight an event. Unfortunately, Ms. Sutton was unable to attend today, but she sent me a flyer for the Tri-Valley nonprofit, Tri-Valley Nonprofit Alliance is doing a food drive and collection. It is on November fifteenth, this Saturday, from ten to two at the grocery outlet locations in all three of the Tri-Valley cities, Dublin, Livermore, and Pleasanton. You can go and donate food there. If you would like more information, go to tvnpa.org. And lastly, I do have a matters initiated for staff. It came up from public comment. It's something we've talked about before, and I would just kind of like to to bring it back up to to highlight it. From Maya's comments earlier, is the idea of third spaces for our youth and young adults. I know, you know, there is limits to where we have for our investments, but possibly bring that as a topic for the Youth Commission to discuss and look for additional opportunities where maybe we can either use spaces that are currently vacant at a low cost or find spaces that are city-owned already, but we can maybe get ideas as someone who's no longer youth. I don't know what that would look like exactly, but that's why we have the commission to bring those ideas and let them tell us, you know, what are some things that we would do that really give those kind of, that 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 third space opportunity for them?
And this is an ideal opportunity to partner with LARPD because, and we have our intergovernmental subcommittee, because they do a lot of recreational and and youth programming. So I think there's an ideal opportunity to partner with LARPD because they have the the elbow room, for example, which is one of those third spaces at the Robert Livermore Center.
Definitely. So I think this is a great opportunity for the commission, for our youth to really, you know, see if there's something that we can, I would, I love the idea of
Interagency Collaboration with the with the the Youth Commission.
Yeah, great. I imagine the schools would also be interested in participating, so.
Great, excellent.
I know the library, the Youth Commission is working with the library on a teen space at the library. But I know our speaker was talking about the Springtown area, and so it would be great to see what we could do up there.
Well, we have the Springtown Library, and we're also talking about the community space, the community garden and the like also near the library. So some great opportunities to start some good conversations. So thank you very much for bringing those up. Okay, a couple of things. I reported these out in my in my report out form, but I just wanted to highlight it. There is a program called the Kindness Flower Project, which I had never heard of, but this is a group of volunteers that provide flowers to people that need to be lifted up. And they have delivered over, well, they've delivered thousands of flower bouquets over the last three years. And this year, over twenty-four hundred bouquets have been delivered. And these are just volunteers, and it started by Molly Fisher. And this is just a passion project that she's undertaken, and she works with folks at Alden Lane Nursery, and flowers that she grows herself along with the volunteers. So it's one of these wonderful things that we do here in Livermore, but the Kindness Flower Project. And as was mentioned, the Tri-Valley Nonprofit Alliance had their Power of Giving program earlier last week and highlighting the number of volunteers in the organizations that do tremendous work here in the Tri-Valley. And also, today was the Alameda County Transportation Commission, and we talked about the Metropolitan Transportation Commission and the Association of Bay Area Governments. And a new thing that is rolling down the pike, Plan Bay Area twenty fifty. So they're taking public comments on this, and this is one of these overarching programs about transportation, housing, jobs. I encourage everybody to look at that and make public comments because this is going to be a large program put together by the the MTC, and we need public comment on it. So with that, there being no further business coming before the council, meeting is adjourned. Thank you.